Right there, how much?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand?
Forty one hundred ninety dollars and twenty cents.
Alright, so far this year, if that's six months, we've only spent?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand. Eight thousand something, but I can't tell what eight thousand something is.
Eighty six oh eight.
Thank you.
Now, let's, before we get ahead.
Yeah.
This next four or five months are gonna be our highest number there. Because of the minimuses and all those things, these people now work their way out to Prairie Hill. The courts hold off during the holidays and then let them start doing their time after that. So those numbers are always off till we get into the latter part.
We don't get a separate bill from CDM for Prairie Hills and want them to go to jail. They sent us one bill for a total amount of inmates and then I have to take, okay, sometimes I'll take this bill out of Prairie Hills just to...
So maybe the LEC, okay, so we have to look at both of them together?
Yeah, yeah, we don't get separate bills, one for Prairie Hill and one for the jail. They just throw two hundred percent base on one bill per week.
Well then, did we need to add the thirty thousand to the food bill? Since we're from before, see then?
Maybe we did.
That's right.
I mean, maybe we didn't really need to add that thirty thousand.
Look, if you look at what you spent the last, the last fiscal year.
I understand that, but I'm thinking maybe this year it's not being spent out of this line item. That's why it's inflated.
But I think what she said was she goes, she separates them by the numbers.
Right.
So she has to look at how many numbers were at Prairie Hills and how many were at the LEC. And these are supposed to be the actuals.
Right, right.
Based on how many inmates and people were out at Prairie Hills.
Exactly.
Between the two, they spent three hundred and fifty, forty, three hundred and forty-five thousand. Between the two, now you have budgeted this amount plus the two seventy for next year. So if they spend everything here, you're probably gonna be short in the next year.
Right.
The next thing is the number, we're talking about the number white, explain that with the minimums.
Right.
Whatever that means.
Then it was me.
Serving time.
Serving time, yeah.
Serving time, serving time.
And then put them in during holidays.
Right.
That's why our, that's why our Prairie Hill numbers were so low. In the separate judges don't sentence people, give them a certain time during the holidays.
I don't have the numbers, but so low just means six or seven people a day though.
And that would jump out a little.
I mean, but they were like two.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But then at the highest, it seemed like it was nine or 10. So that's what they jump up six or...
It gets higher than that.
I think I gave you...
Last time we were running twenty-five or thirty minutes.
It just depends on...
Sleeping there at night, that's not electronic monitoring?
Yeah, sleeping there.
How long are they there for all?
Just depends on how long the, what they did.
I gave him my...
Oh, they could, they could be there six months.
Six months.
Kind of marked the number of jump because now they're going out for certain time and after three months it drops way down.
There'll be another cycle.
We have seventeen out there today.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this budget? Is it emotional?
Move to receive it, I guess.
Second, but I do have a question. How many officers do you have out there?
Two.
Per shift? So are you talking eight?
No, we have three shifts out there right now. We haven't gone to the two.
You have everything else, you got, it's a twenty-four hour operation.
Right.
You've got a third of the six, that's two, so that's eight.
No.
Three shifts?
Three shifts.
Two, four, six.
Or six.
Okay, then they're working seven days a week.
Oh, no, they don't take their numbers like that. They take, that's one of the issues. That comes from the jail staff. You're scheduled up in the jail and then you go...
Sergeant tells you to go out there and work.
So it's not the same two people that are...
Yeah, but what I'm saying is you've got eight people out there.
Through all different shifts.
Eight people a week working at...
One shift per week.
Right.
Right, okay, yeah, yeah, I'll agree with that, yeah.
That come from the jail and get a certain...
Right, but that's part of the discussion that has to be held. If you don't put those eight people out there and you keep them down here.
You only have two out there at a time. There's only two out there at a time.
I understand that, but you're talking three and a third shift, so you're talking eight.
You have six, you have six people working out there in twenty-four hour period. So, those people, you, those people, if you closed it, those two officers would go back to working at the main jail.
Along the prison.
Right, but we're talking eight, not two.
No. I don't know why you're getting eight.
Do you have two people on a shift?
Out there, yes.
You have three shifts a day?
Yes.
That's six?
Yes.
Then you have to add a third because of two days off that each one of those gentlemen get, or ladies.
Okay, Larry, what is it we're...
Larry, you're confused because we're taking those people from downtown and sending them out there off of the shifts from downtown.
I understand that.
They don't have their own, they don't have their own personnel out there.
I understand it, but still, in a week's time, you've got eight people working up in that, in that facility. Or two people a shift that you could use down here.
Yes, I agree with that.
Two people per shift.
And that would give you additional two is to cover the days off and whatever.
But we're short because of that, that's one of the reasons we are short now.
I just, one part of the discussion, we start talking about Prairie Hills, what effect that has on the jails.
Because they come off of our, our shift down here and go out there.
From the jail, that probably would be like four.
Four point, four point three five.
If you had a group of them out there with what you're saying to cover a seven day week, you would need twenty-four of them. Just eight of their, twenty-four seven, they keep doing, doing work.
Three shifts.
Boy, we got some math we gotta do together.
But just not think about if you're gonna run over them.
Right.
If they closed it, bring those tailors down, would that solve your staffing problem downtown? Not considering you might run over your total capacity, but you once were asking for five jailers, would it help? Just on number wise, if it's the numbers of inmates, would that help if they closed and bring all those people back down? That solve our staffing problem? Not saying it's talk, we're gonna be capacity or not, but the staffing.
Well, you'd have additional staff, but you can't, I mean...
You also have additional inmates and additional duties now too because you...
Yeah, I know that, but just, just look at staffing numbers alone. Cause you may not have, anytime you have people, you're, you're improving the number that you have, anytime that you have. Cause they were talking about five deputies downtown here, we wanted to resolve it if they closed that and brought the five, all the tailors down here, would that solve this five problem?
No.
That's all.
Okay, let's, is there a motion to receive this budget? Okay, those in favor of the kid with the same eye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, let's go on to...
Question, wait, did you cut the...
No, we didn't cut that.
Did you get a second for the LEC argument of the, was there a second on the LEC?
Yes, there was a second.
We didn't care, so we're going to the...
Yeah.
Administration, page seventy and seventy-two.
Now, there is no overtime in this book, maybe five hundred dollars, I don't know. There's no overtime. Zero, they zeroed it out.
Oh, did you hit?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Todd, I don't get overtime. There are extra hours.
Todd and Greg don't get overtime.
Extra hours?
Twenty-nine thirty-five.
Arms and ammo.
Are you gonna start a gas?
Very good.
I'm, well, I don't know, that's where I jumped to. I have it marked, highlighted. Twenty-nine thirty-five, arms and ammunition.
Yeah, that's gone up tremendously. But also, if you look under arms and ammo, remember, they've, they've told us, and we do a good job of buying our ammo way ahead of time for the increases. But, but also in here are your tasers.
Look the page.
The twenty-one tasers, alright?
The twenty-one tasers.
One time expense, won't have it again for five years.
Twenty-one tasers in this budget?
Right.
And that's only for patrol, that doesn't give every deputy a taser. We're, we're doing the need for them. And that's the guys out in the squad cars answering the call. So are civil deputies still don't have them or are you...
There's twenty-one tasers in this line at twenty-nine thirty-five.
Right.
Yes.
It's on the next page.
Next page, George.
I forgot.
Um... That's where the increases.
Right.
Ammo's the same. Ammo's the same, it increases the twenty-one tasers.
And it's like I said, that would be once for five years.
See, once again, are they checking their tasers out like you're doing in the jail, is that not practical?
Their issue, they carry that taser, that's part of their uniform.
Which, which you are...
And they do now, how many tasers do you have now?
Uh, I want it, we used to have, we were up to like twenty-three, I think we're down to like eighteen now because some of them have just died. That's why we've all given up our tasers to patrol deputies.
So you buy, so you're gonna buy twenty, you wanna buy twenty-one of them?
Right.
That is how many people are on patrol.
All of those tasers are on one.
That's after the fact, it's too bad I couldn't have had four every year or...
Well, why can't we going forward do, do the same thing, not buy all twenty-one, are all...
Cause I don't know who we...
There aren't ten that could limp along another...
If you will go over and tell the ones that can't carry them, I, I, that's fine. They're just like, no, I use them too. I don't wanna pick and choose who gets to carry their tasers.
You're talking about a political nightmare, somebody's like, oh, you didn't give money, you didn't like me, you know, so it's just...
And for those guys, that, that's truly unique, their answer in those domestic and fight calls alone and that's a true for patrol deputies having...
We're looking at forty-one thousand dollars for all of this.
The good news is, before we slash, you gotta go down and look at the whole thing. I think overall, we, we actually cut money.
Out of this entire operation budget, in two thousand and thirteen, that operation budget was six hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and nine cents. This year, the sheriff is asking for six hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. I will throw in the caveat, that's six cars, not fourteen.
Right, so you understand that. Just merely...
Well, you took the other cars out to come with that figure.
I, I took it out, see, I, I, first time you win a budget, my understanding was you put in the need and you make the determination on... So there's fourteen cars with a hundred thousand miles on them or more that need replaced. So I put all fourteen down. I, I didn't expect that you would purchase fourteen cars.
We just wanted to show you a clear picture. These fourteen, scare you, I understand now, I understand now you all had to go to the cardiologist, but...
We're calling our nurse.
Yeah, you didn't call, we didn't have one available.
Yeah.
But, uh, that fourteen was just to let you know, we have fourteen vehicles with a hundred plus mile, a hundred thousand plus miles.
Well, we got a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars out of that particular mine item.
Yes.
Right, right. And just go back to the six cars we get, but understand, we're, we're falling behind.
Know that, that, that car with a hundred thousand miles on it out there, costs more gas, costs more maintenance, it's costs, it's like...
You shouldn't rather.
It's like a race car. Well, we can't do anything with our papers up, our deputies are ending up doing this right now.
I would say it wasn't.
In the city, so... Listen, if you ask the deputies, it wasn't.
We understand all of that.
Well...
Let's go back to page seventy-one.
Seventy.
Oh, seventy.
Do you really wanna go to that gas and oil, that's um, thirty-four thousand. Actuals on that was a hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for two thousand and thirteen.
Okay, that's what we have.
Now, that stays the same, that is, they have a period thirteen. What was that, what?
So what's the feeling on the board of that, I mean, do you wanna leave that mine item the same as far as gas and oil? Even though the gas is cheaper now?
Which I would, I would say, when these figures were done to get to the hundred and ninety thousand in the last month, I don't know if it's going to major with card or what, our gas was down this last month. And really made a difference in, if you look at the actuals for two thousand and fourteen, we're on pace then if you double that, you know, to a hundred and eighty thousand. Which is less than the hundred and ninety I put in there, but I did this a month ago, this budget.
Hopefully it'll stay in...
So what are you saying, it's probably ten thousand? I, I, it's, it's hard to judge it because one month made a huge difference in the amount of fuel that's getting...
We are, we went to fleet card and this fleet card has really saved us a considerable amount of money. And I think Todd would be wise to tell you a few things, we do get some money, but we don't pay the gas tax. What are some of the other things that you could tell them that happened with this, do you know, on our fleet card, the savings?
We don't have to pay the federal tax, we just have to do the gas tax refund. Still, we have a few things that not like we used to, we get that saving up.
As long as it's federal tax on the gas. You don't have to pay that now, we used to pay it.
Right, we have this fleet card, this fleet card, I believe really the county should look at. So, it's for, especially for our guys on patrol who could go all over the place and just put that card in and they...
What we saw, most of our saving was, before we went to this fleet card, we had two places in the county where our guys could go fill up their car with gas at climbing hill in Prairie Hill. Well, if you were in Pearson, you were running low on fuel, you had to drive all the way climbing hill to put gas in the car and then go take another call in correction bill or anything. But you could stop at the Pearson, now you can stop at the Pearson Mini Mark, use the car filled up and go...
This would really save the county, these fleet cards, and you know, the nice part about it is, if that car is George's car, it'll say everything that George does on that car. Maintenance, miles, how much he's getting per gallon. Rose County car, I mean, yeah.
George's County.
George's one oh, car one oh one. It would give a detailed account of how he's driving. These gentlemen look over everybody's cars and make sure that we're, we're driving appropriately, we're getting, we're going to the places that are the cheaper places to get our oil changes and things like that. It's really true accounting. Before, this is what happened, you fill out your gas tickets on some deal, scribble it, and it ended up in some file and a stack and a former lieutenant, and never went anywhere. Nobody knew, how many miles per gallon am I getting, how much money is it costing per gallon? I mean, this is a tremendous system.
Can we cut the thousand dollars then?
Driving appropriately.
He was driving faster than that.
Can we, can we cut the thousand out of this?
Well, is this hundred and nine thousand removed and I had on gas tax? Cause maybe it could be more than ten thousand. Gas tax federal is pretty high.
Well...
It could be cut more than ten, but maybe need to file what...
You know, it's a...
What's the gas, I mean, I...
You know, I, I'm hoping, George, like you, you never know OPEC, what they might, I'm hoping gas goes down.
Yeah, we were going for it.
But it's the winter time, are calls for service dropped during this time of the year? Come, come April, May, June, I anticipate those will go back up?
I would cut ten thousand out of that.
Second, I can live with that.
Do you want to do it all at one time?
Yeah.
First ten there.
Is there any, on page seventy-one?
You're left, you're left the taser in, right?
You're left the taser in, is that?
It, it really is, uh...
I can write in for you the numbers.
Forty-one thirty-two, travel expense, why don't we take a couple thousand out of there? You just haven't spent it, that's all.
Two, two thousand out of that, I'll save it.
So you're cutting that from six thousand to four thousand?
Right.
Can we go back to twenty-nine forty?
What went, Dennis?
Twenty-nine forty, how much are the bulletproof vest, I assume they're bulletproof vests?
Ballistic vests.
Ballistic vests.
Yeah, how much is a ballast piece? Um, they're eight hundred dollars a piece and there's fourteen of them in that, that are up. Next year, there's only one that needs to be purchased, but we have fourteen ballistic vests that are expired. And how much are they these? Eight hundred. Okay. So we left the seventeen thousand and then the additional cost is the one time, and those are good for five years also. Okay, seventeen, didn't we raise that because you had six new deputies coming in for us?
Right, right.
So can that seventeen be reduced? I don't know, it was seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty-five was the actual for two thousand and thirteen. Okay, which really places a lot of deputies, six deputies are retired, they're not in uniform.
We took that out of the salary, we didn't bring our...
Uniformed out of salaries?
Well, we just offset one or other, we didn't raise that much.
Here's another thing, it's...
And remember Dennis, in twelve, it was nineteen two ninety-nine, and there was no additional people.
Okay. With, with deputies in Iowa code, we have to purchase them their equipment and their uniforms, that's, that's part of the code. What we have went to though, and we won't see it, I guess I won't, we won't know for sure how it's gonna affect us because this is the first year. If they, if they do put in for new equipment or a new uniform, we want the old equipment, the old uniform back. We've never did that before. To ensure that we're just not, hey, I don't wanna do...
Come with it anyway.
Yeah. Where'd the uniform and equipment go?
Reserves, got it in the closet.
They didn't keep themself, they... No, you can't like wear this out of the closet.
Yeah, I don't really prefer it.
Well, what does the board wanna do with this town, do you wanna...
With what, George?
With twenty-nine forty.
Well, don't cut, if you're cutting, don't cut the vest part.
Yeah.
Cause that's the ballistic vest or...
Just remember, if you go through this whole thing, we save money at the very end, you'll see, there's five thousand dollars saved.
I'm not in favor of that safety.
Thank you.
What about forty-four, I mean forty-one forty-one cellphone expense, why is that?
It's, it's not a cellphone, that's what the computers run off of, their air cards, and that's what Verizon's telling us that's gonna cost next year.
So when they're in the computer driving around to do our reports, it automatically comes here. And that's our MDB, a system that we communicate, comm center to us, the police department has it, we have it, it's just some of that newer technology. We eliminated cell phones last year, the personal use cell phones, remember, came in and got nine grand. I said that's where we could use some of that money. And what happened was, we knew we were going to these computers in our car, and that's, that's where we're at.
About forty, oh, sorry.
Is that a yearly expense?
Yes.
Forty-two twenty?
Actually, you pay it monthly, like a cellphone, right? We pay that monthly, like a cellphone.
Better, that's what it confused.
You can't help that, forty-two twenty, just looking at it.
Yeah.
Twelve, you did ninety-seven, thirty-three, and fiscal year thirteen, it was seventy-three twenty, you budgeted twenty-nine.
That was because of our new deputies.
I, I, that was, I think that was my question when I did it.
Well, then can we take it out?
Yeah, can it be reduced?
You, you can, the one thing you look at is, I mean, that's that whole unfunded stuff that we have to do. Our detectives have to go to certain schools every year, our deputies have to have certain schooling every year. But I mean, definitely you could cut some of that out.
Right.
I'm assuming that's more like what it, ten, around ten thousand it costs to do that based on priors. I, I don't know, cut... Cut fifteen? Fifteen, where he says, I can, yep.
Fifteen, so we'll be down to fifteen, is that where you're at?
It'll be down to fourteen five.
Motor vehicle expense, that's, that's gonna, you've got the vehicles, you're gonna get some more of them.
That's where you get into...
Was it maintenance?
The fourteen vehicles that I'm talking, basically, I just took what we're spending now to keep these cars on the road, and that's how I came up with that figure. Like, I don't anticipate, if you look, it's forty-one thousand, I don't think we're gonna hit eighty-two thousand this year. Because the work's already been done. But we are on pace with cars out there to be about seventy thousand dollars to keep them on the road.
Can we take eight thousand dollars out of that? Forty-four forty? Forty-four is out of eight?
Yeah.
We'll put a big Band-Aid on it.
I just, I guess I keep wondering how much you're driving these cars for non-work time.
You, I gotta be, I can't help you there, honestly?
I don't know.
They do not wanna be in a marked squad car any more than they have to, because when they're in that car, people are coming up to them. They're, so, they don't, it's not like you're out driving around that squad car to go to a grocery store or something, because you don't wanna be in it.
Well, I wouldn't wanna be in it, I guess I hear people, quite honestly, I hear people complaining about it.
Because I think a lot of that has to do is, people don't understand what's going on. When we have in-service crating, they're not gonna wear a uniform to in-service, they have to, their first thing they do when they show up is physical fitness, they run. So when they're driving to in-service, they're gonna be in physical fitness stuff. I think some people think, oh, he's out just driving around, he's not, he's going, he's getting ready to go get rain.
Alright, so we took, some money out of that. What about forty, six hundred, you take, what you take?
Eight.
Eight thousand, so they're sixty-five seventy-nine.
What about sixty-three fifty, which is more vehicle to get? More vehicle to get.
Next page.
But can we go back to one, forty-four seventy-eight? The footnote says they added forty-four seventy-five, forty-two oh one, forty-four seventy-eight, when you add those three up from the current year, it comes to twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand five hundred. We're doubling now, almost a forty-three thousand, where these costs double. I will, it is, we have what's called Sun Guard Crimes. And that's the software that goes on the computers for the deputies to be able to, I believe, MDB, NCIC, all that stuff. That has always been non-funded, and that's about nineteen thousand dollars, and it's never, it's, I can't even get the IT department up to that.
We won't. We would hope, but no. The police department pays their share and we, and now, you know, we're paying our share, how they paid it before was on that grant one. Right.
Seven thousand of it is for the tasers.
Seven thousand of this is for tasers?
Taser, taser evidence, remember, we had that.
You gave me fifteen from jail.
That's part of that contractual, we have to have that two-year retention window, which will save us in the long run for court case.
Thousand dollars of it is nuance.
Nuance is a dictation system.
We partied with Sioux City on that, which should, typically it costs us twenty-five thousand dollars about every three years. Sioux City has paid for it already, so it's gonna cost us a thousand dollars this year. In year five, it will become our responsibility to pick up the new contract of nuance for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Cause it's gonna be an ongoing expense, I mean, it's gonna be forty-three thousand annually every year, what?
Yes, well, except for when they add on there, when these businesses add on their percentage increases.
Right. Those are costs of having all the technology that we need, otherwise we go back to pen and paper. And we, we don't wanna go back there, cause we have all, all these things in our car that are gonna help us.
But we put everything, like maintenance contracts and professional services into that one line item because it's, it's all pretty much contract stuff that we have to use outside entities to be able to do our job.
That's a big, big job. You bunch twelve thousand dollars.
Well, that, that Sun Guard, I, I, that is a big job, but it's always been paid for some other way, I don't know how it got paid.
Through grants, right.
This is really hurting us, the lack of those grants running out.
That, I mean, I think we're, I think we're all in agreement. This was a grant funded, um, budget, and we, we know that a grant funded budget is non-sustainable. And so, now we're showing you these numbers and we can't get away from them.
Can the forfeiture fund be used for any of this vest or taser or that? Forfeiture is, is, can only be used for non-budgeted items. So if you pay for vests, you, you cannot use it.
Well...
Can we take it out of the budget then and use it?
We never paid for vests.
Right.
Yes, you have.
Yeah, your boys paid for it, yeah, we paid.
Well, I thought they were grants.
We got grants, but you had to pay half of it.
Okay, is there anything else on this budget? We're gonna pay seventy-two this budget.
How much did they take out on the cars?
Radio and related equipment, I just have a question on that.
Radio, what page is that?
Where we at?
Forty-four sixty, I believe it is.
Back a page.
So and admin?
Radio and related equipment.
We have to do what's called PM in the radios, which is twice a year, we just haven't did it yet. So you'll see a pretty sizable increase coming up in the next couple of months, we just haven't done it yet.
We use some, uh, cooperation agreement with Sioux City Police Department. They have somebody, and we've worked with Chief Young, that when we have in-service, we can have his guy come out and do the work. It's gonna be much cheaper than taking it to electronic monitoring. Now, electronic monitoring might not like that, but it's, it's gonna save dollars because they have purchased that piece of equipment. All this Doug asks is that we, that he come out, he... All this Doug asks is that we, um, that he come out, he submit a, a bill, and we send it to the auditor, and then we pay him. And that's how we're going to do it.
So is he going to spend this fourteen thousand, estimated, for the next?
It's going to be about, I want to say we have forty-five radios, so you're looking at forty-five hundred twice a year, so nine thousand.
Well, can you reduce it five thousand then?
Well, you spent twenty, you still got to get into like your cables that go bad in the radios, or if the radio goes bad.
Yeah. Anything else on this budget? What did the cost, uh?
What did you do with sixty-three fifty?
Sixty-three fifty?
Which one's that?
Yeah, how much did you cut?
Reduced to one seventy?
Hundred seventy-five, hundred sixty thousand, six cars left.
Six cars a year, like we have?
So we left one thirty-two there.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the total cost?
Total so far now is, on administration, is two-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars.
How much?
Two-hundred-and-eleven.
So that. Well, I'm over receive, but we're going to be going through this again.
Yeah.
There's no question about it.
Okay. Those favorite motion, any people saying aye?
Aye.
Dennis, so roughly, what, what, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm right, that this amount is considerable.
We're six-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, nine sixty-one, but that includes moving some tasers over to general stuff, moving the deputy over to rural basic, and adding fifty thousand revenue, plus all the cuts we've done today.
And it comes in cheaper than it did last year.
Six-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand bucks.
For admin?
Over admin, that's.
What I'm saying is, in two thousand and thirteen, it was six-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars for that operating budget. As we presented it today, before there were any cuts, it was six-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, two-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. So we, I mean, we had already cut it by four thousand dollars before we even came over here.
Right, and then, so we all agree, six cars instead of eight, so there's, you know, a bunch of money, so, right. Right, okay.
Let's go on to page seventy-three, which is the civil division.
Did you come back first?
Yeah. Civil division, uh, page seventy-three.
That's all wages.
Wages, if you've got, uh, a thousand, one-hundred-seven dollars in here for overtime. You haven't spent any in there, uh, within the civil division?
On our, on our overtime, on the civil division, what will happen is, during our in-service that we have, we do it, we went to four in-services a year. And so those guys, our, our patrol guys would be tied up in an in-service. Then we have to bring out, um, our civil guys to cover the patrol shift. And that's where the overtime will come, and with the shift differential, that, that's why that money was there.
You don't think you're going to go over that amount?
No.
No.
They only do it about three times a year.
But you don't have to spend any of that.
Right, we, well, yeah, we should probably pick it up here now.
One is because I believe I, I took it out of a different budget. When they came out and worked the uniform patrol, we took it out as an overtime budget for the uniform patrol.
Right, this is more accurate.
This will be more.
The organized employees, it's gone up about fifty-six thousand. Is that an additional employee?
No, there's three.
I think the organized employee part might be that when Lynn left, that was a, uh, could have been that deputy spot, but I'm not sure. Jennifer?
That's it, right.
Exactly.
You're all deputies now.
Yes. Right, we're all deputies. Remember, she was the last of civilian process servers. You guys granted that position once it left to become a deputy.
Yeah.
So there's the difference.
By fifty-six thousand?
Well, they, she probably made.
They're making very good money.
Who is she? She wasn't.
It's because of you.
She wasn't. You can look at that two ways, you want to go back and ask her.
Anything else on this budget? Your motion received.
Leave it.
Those favorite papers saying aye?
Aye.
Highway safety grant. Is this one of the keys?
That's on stream, where's home?
That's under which one?
Highway safety grant, seventy-four.
We put zero in there, but I think they spend, hopefully also.
With the exception of this year. It's a three-year contract. They cover a hundred percent in year one and year two. In year three, they only cover seventy-five percent. So when somebody works it, we, in year three, we have to pay twenty-five percent.
So where are you going to get that?
That's going to cost about three thousand. We're cutting, we're making it more difficult to get overtime. We're going to get that right out of the overtime budget we have.
Okay.
It's, because then, once we sign the new contract, the next two years, it's a hundred percent covered.
So is that third year or a three-year contract?
Right, right.
Then in fifteen, sixteen, if they still fund the program.
I think they will, they always seem to have it. That one won't go away, right.
No, because we find that within the one N W F.
Their motion received.
Leave it.
Right.
Those favorite people saying aye?
Aye.
Let's pose as, let's go on to, uh, crime prevention, page seventy-five.
There's the overtime budget.
This is one individual, correct?
Okay, yes.
This is one individual, crime prevention?
Yes.
I call them out of last, because, yeah, I used.
This condition was taken care of through grant.
It is.
It is.
It's a ten thousand dollar grant. So that will pay that nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-three.
Okay, that's what it is.
Right.
Cut that, I thought that was.
We try not to limit it to just one individual.
Well, so does, same thing then, where does that show up though, as far as revenue?
Yeah, because we should not be taxing for nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars.
But isn't that a big increase from what he's doing now? Because normally.
No, he spends that ten thousand dollars every year.
Yeah, it's been every, it's a grant that comes through.
Yeah, where's it at?
There is a DARE grant. It's ten sixty-eight, a different budget area. When he does his grant overtime, I quoted out of that. This is for anything that he has in overtime that's not DARE-related, like he does, um, he used to do parades and stuff. I don't, he does.
Well, we cut that back.
I think Kim and I had a little confusion when we were entering the budget, that, um, his DARE overtime came out here and doesn't.
Yeah, oh, okay. Well, that's what I dropped at nine-eight-seven-three.
So that was actually all overtime?
Hey there, Jennifer. Don't, don't run off.
Nine-eight-seven-three, since it will not come from the DARE grant, then we will live with, uh, nineteen-seventy-three amount. So go ahead and slash off.
So you're reducing it yourself, okay.
That amount, that was a.
For cutting seventy-nine hundred off?
Roughly, yes.
Which will affect the benefit stuff, I mean, five-niners, a little bit, not much.
Because Major Stallman can go to parades for free, because we don't pay him overtime.
Long as you're not beating him while he's there.
Is there anything else on this budget?
We'll receive it.
Second. I did.
No, you can't.
I can too.
No, you can't.
I can too. I'm not part of the, I'm not part of the deputies.
I don't care, you still.
I'm still going to vote, George. You're not the, the master here, I can do what I want.
I never get to do what I want.
Me either.
Aye.
Hi.
Don't feel bad, Jackie.
I don't ever get to either.
I'm sorry, seventy-nine hundred.
Let's do page seventy-seven, which is the.
It's all nothing.
For we have ten thousand, why we have ten thousand bucks for DARE?
Right.
Here we get the DARE. Now, does Patty follow through with that, or who does that?
Yeah, Patty takes care of that every year.
One year we missed it, but we got a deal about that.
Right, yeah.
So which page do we have?
Page seventy. I mean seventy-seven.
There.
There, and, uh, is there most of you see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Those, they get the saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, and that green, that green, uh, page seventy-eight.
We'll receive it.
Second.
Well, there is.
There is, huh?
No.
That's why I wanted to receive the zero one.
See, for some reason, we're carrying that on the books here. Until you have three years' history gone, we have to carry it out. Even though there's nothing left for current year or next year.
Is that your rule?
No, that's HTE, you go on software. Can't do it. Who would have sold it?
Shifts, agreements, grant, uh, big day to breathe.
That's nothing as well.
That's nothing, that's true.
The, uh, court security, the jail supplementary.
That's where we got to add in tasers, or we leave them?
Right, from the jail.
Yeah, and that'd be.
That is the jail supplementary.
Right.
So just make sure you don't forget, that would come out of. What line I'm reaching, I have to look higher.
That money was what that we would transfer into there?
Well, we left, there's twenty-one in, I'm sorry, there's twenty in the jail, right? Let me get to here.
What's there?
Eleven in the jail, Dennis.
Okay, move the nine over, so we're moving nine thousand over to ninety-four. And, and, uh, that'd be plus nine thousand there, for nine tasers.
Jackie, and you guys seconded five for the jail.
Okay, five there, you want to do a?
It's my extreme negotiation.
That was what she said, I'm sorry.
So are we going to budget nine, or?
Five.
Five.
Five, no, no, in here, it's all of them, it's nine, yeah.
Twenty-nine forty.
Don't worry, we'll think it.
I'm not so sure you're not going to get all the other ones.
Anything else on this budget?
The overtime, it all stays the same, pretty much.
Are we on court security?
Yes. Page twelve, general software.
Uh, I've got a lot of questions on this one.
What's that, Larry?
I say I do have a lot of questions on this one. We've got instructors pay for five thousand.
Jennifer brought it back. The jail's portion of the maintenance contract, I figured in for the tasers.
Okay.
Should some of that come out of court security now? Does that make a difference?
Yeah, really, yeah, well, if there's power, you have to give us the number. You know, if our advantage is covering these tasers, then whatever the nine tasers are, we've got to take out of general basic and move over. So if you can, give me the number, whenever you can, tomorrow night. Never mind.
Never mind.
Okay. Give me that.
Never mind. There you go.
Okay, uh.
We're not doing that?
No, just nine thousand.
Standby pay.
It's contractual.
How come we've never had it before?
Because that's, these are the.
New line items we asked for.
So we can make it easier for all of us.
They were embedded.
Good luck with that.
These kids' money was embedded.
Right, we're splitting out, so you know what all this stuff is.
Instructor pay, is that the same thing?
Right.
Structure, standby, and field training was standard on there in this particular form. Four times, make it more understandable, more transparent.
Right.
Gas and oil.
Gas and oil.
Haven't spent very much.
Thirteen thousand, you have a quarter there?
Let me see what they did.
That's been everywhere. Look what it was.
Actually, they spent twelve thousand seven eighty-one.
Right.
So it is lower, we're getting, are they on fleet car too?
Yes, they are.
So could something be cut there, like, who asked, Larry?
Yeah, Larry did.
Shouldn't be cut. Shouldn't. If you're on the fleet car, you aren't paying federal tax.
We, we would say, yes, you could cut some. We are doing a lot more transportations. We're getting some transportation requests or orders that we seem to try to, uh, fight for. You know, we've had somewhere, courts have said, this is one of your substance abusers, he's from Woodbury County, he's in Mason City, we want you to transport him to Glenwood.
Do they pay us for that?
So.
The court, court, uh, they order that, order.
Well, we're fighting, and the county attorney's office is helping us in some of that work.
Okay.
There's nothing in the code, and it's maybe it's a little unclear at times, but, uh, that we have to transport substance.
Our transport officers are, are very careful about what, what kind of transports we're making, whether they're not questionable, or whether we should be doing.
Some could be done.
Some judges can find one of us, even have some of that.
Some could be done by ambulance.
Yeah, you better be careful, because you'll, you'll find me the deputy.
Remember, you have new tasers, new, or full seat pass, to protect yourself, whatever you have to do.
What else is budget here, guys?
Wait a minute, I still want to get something like gas and oils. Only spent five thousand this year so far.
What do you want, like, eight or nine?
Fleet service cards save money, so you could take some.
So eight, three thousand out of there?
I can live with that.
Let's do eight thousand.
I'm going to take eight thousand.
Twenty-two thousand, we're not going down fourteen yet. You guys grab that?
What was it?
Eight thousand on gas.
Yes, eight thousand.
Surgery.
Might help, Greg.
You guys want it? Anything else on this budget?
Yeah, but it's, uh, what it is, it's just money that hasn't been spent.
What was that?
Are you talking about the gas still?
No, I'm on to, uh, returning prisoners, travel expense, meal expense. We're just not spending any of that money we're taxing for.
Oh, let's see, we're at returning prisoners, fourteen twenty-two so far this year, right? Is that, or last year, that's what we had, fourteen twenty-two.
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five, three eighty-five, yeah.
That number's right for this year, thirteen.
Right.
Let's just take five hundred out of it, we'll weigh it in next year.
What, returning prisoners?
Yeah. And take another five hundred out of travel expense.
Meals, they spent, uh, three hundred eighty-five, budget three thousand, budget three thousand in next year.
I'd take a thousand out of that.
What, where are you at for a thousand?
Around forty-one, forty-four, forty-one, thirty-four. School and instruction.
Where was a thousand, Larry, which one? Meal expenses.
Meal expenses. I didn't touch anything after that on this page.
I would like to point out also that, uh, line item forty-four forty, we, we had ninety-four fifty for what was supposed to be our actual for F O thirteen. It was actually eighteen thousand five hundred twenty-one thirty-six after thirty thirteen.
What happened to thirty, what happened to that thirty thirteen?
Double, got a record, new car.
You spent more than two months, they did the whole ten, twelve months.
Right.
New van.
Lot of new van.
Yeah, I was just going to say, they buy a new van. I'm not kidding.
They buy new vehicle, did you?
No. Not for eight.
It could, it could, it could also, that, that increase could have been patrol cars, because that might have got taken out of there.
Just quoted.
Yeah.
By chance, yes. By chance, yes. So you're down to minus thousand, after you put nine in, you're going to cut your after minus thousand.
Okay, anything else on this budget, ladies and gentlemen?
No, except we're not spending any money in radios and equipment. Forty-four sixty.
Yeah, we budgeted twenty-five hundred, you know, there, spent, actually spent twenty thirteen, two hundred and four dollars.
Is that the actual that was spent though, or did they buy it out there?
That is actual, yeah.
Yep, that's actual. I think you could easily. Fifteen hundred knock that down.
I don't have anything else.
Yeah, until the radio goes bad.
Yeah, that's.
Is there a motion to receive this budget as the.
Second, sorry. I was taking a little nap there.
By saying aye?
Aye.
Stay.
Let's go back to uniform patrol, under rural basic.
This is where it's all payroll. What I did do is bring that ninety thousand, fifty back from general basics over to.
This is all payroll?
Yes.
This isn't a new sheet?
No, this is a sheet here, I made the plus and minus on. So here we're actually in ten fourteen, we're plusing sixty-three thousand, seventy-nine dollars. Now, this is, this is quite, if he's assigned, should he really go in ten sixteen then, supervisory?
Yes.
So instead of ten fourteen, I'm going ten sixteen, same dollar now, just get it in the right line item.
Sixty-three what?
Sixty-three oh seventy-nine. And then, of course, when I fight I R, all the benefits, total ninety thousand, two fifty. So we're done, we're saving, cut our deficit in the general basic, what we've added taxes here. Because here we love it, general basic, we can't, and it's giving them back to the eighth board for.
What page are we on?
Run page six.
Six, and rural basic, Larry. Run the very last one on the bottom.
Thought it said eight.
Otherwise, you're looking for overtime a little bit.
Thought I was bad.
Any other discussion on this budget, see anything else?
Want to receive it?
There, anything else?
I have an unrural supervisory organized.
Under what?
What number?
Rural.
Seventeen sixteen.
On mine, I show three sergeants.
There's two, and then we're adding the other one, move it over, it'll be three.
Okay.
Care to move, here's our general basic over, so you will have three sergeants?
We'll have three.
Yes.
All right.
Any further discussion?
What are allowances taxable?
Uniform allowance at the end of the year.
Why do they call, all right.
That's what you guys said, you need to negotiate.
Any other discussion? Those favorite papers saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed saying aye?
Stay.
One thing we need to address too much, is vacancies better since May first, which is a jailer. An individual does not work since May first, is not on payroll, is not on anything. You did fill that position.
Yes. No.
I didn't see my, you're, after all your jailers, what is our?
That was, I don't know how to explain it, other than he was injured, and someone in H R decided that maybe if he signed his letter of resignation, it might be better. He got an attorney, get an attorney, dragged things out. While he was injured, everything was in limbo, and he couldn't get a surgery till late August. Late August, he gets surgery, went to see the doctor, middle of October, wasn't getting along well. The doctor said, I'll see you sometime in December, at which point, that's between him and the doctor, let us know. Now he is petitioning to, with I R for disability. So he is going to take care of those issues.
One position, that's, I, that's your only vacant position.
First two.
Two vacancies.
Okay, we have two vacancies.
Okay.
And as soon as we can get it done, we'll, we'll be right after.
Are they jailer positions?
Yes.
Good. They're empty positions. Okay, anything else?
Oh, it was on non-tax, basically, they're all, that's a forfeiture, dare, reserve, donation, you can prove them all, as long as there's no tax on them at all.
Move it adjourned.
I think he wants a motion to get that done.
Okay, opposed to a move?
Those are all grants? Those are grants?
Like dare donations.
Oh, all right.